Adequate public notice of this reading was provided by the Secretary of the Board on May thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four to the Home Use Tribune, the Star Ledger, and the Clerk of the City of New Brunswick. The time and location of this reading and all meetings of this party are posted in City Hall, Seventy-Eighth Bayberry Street in New Brunswick. Item number one, roll call.
Ms. Caldwell. Mrs. Medina Hernandez. Mr. Ortiz.
Yes.
Mrs. Seawood.
Here.
Mrs. Solis.
Here.
Mr. Spencer.
Here.
Ms. Varela.
Here.
Mr. Adorno.
Here.
Ms. Sevilla.
Here.
We have a call.
Item number two, deflagration. Turn it to Dr. Johnson. Reminder that the next regular monthly Board of Education meeting will be held on Tuesday, October fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, beginning at seven P. M. at New Brunswick High School in the auditorium. Moving toward item number three minutes, can I please have a motion for August twenty to twenty twenty-four? Three minutes.
Ms. Caldwell.
I'm staying.
Mrs. Medina Hernandez. Mrs. Seawood.
Yes.
Mr. Ortiz.
Yes.
Mrs. Solis.
Yes.
Mr. Spencer.
Yes.
Ms. Varela.
Yes.
Mr. Adorno.
Yes.
Ms. Sevilla.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Moving to item number four, the Superintendent's Report. Dr. Aubrey Johnson.
Thank you, and welcome everyone to a new school year. As of September two thousand and twenty twenty-four, we have enrolled eight thousand nine hundred and twenty-nine students, and we had our two cases of harassment, intimidation, and bullying for the previous end of school in June of twenty-three twenty-four school year. That was just confirmed. We are now in our ninth day of school, and I'm pleased to say it's been a great success. There was smooth opening of schools this year as a testament to the hard work, dedication, and collaboration of our entire school community. Our teachers, our staff, our administrators ensured that students were welcomed into a safe, engaging, and well-prepared learning environments, and I'm incredibly proud of the efforts made across the district to ensure our students are ready for the year ahead. Thank you to everyone who contributed to making this a strong start to the school year. Also, Back to School Night has kicked off this week, and more will be scheduled throughout the month of September as we begin exciting new school year and encourage all parents and guardians to attend these events. It's a great opportunity to meet your child's teachers, learn about the curriculum, and explore ways to support their academic success. Your participation is essential to building a strong homeschool partnership, and we look forward to seeing you there. I'm also excited to announce that our district has achieved Silver Status from Sustainable Jersey Schools. This recognition reflects the hard work and dedication of all our schools in promoting eco-friendly practices and fostering a healthier, more sustainable learning environment for our entire community. And as you can recall, last year we were bronze, and I said, okay, we're gonna get silver, and I did do it. I just wanted to say our school administrators and our teams in our schools was able to earn the Silver Status. In addition to that, New Brunswick Middle School, La Cita Valente Community School, and McKinley Community Schools have earned a prestigious Digital School Star recognition for their excellence in integrated technology to enhance learning. These accomplishments again highlight the incredible efforts of our students, our staff, and our community. Congratulations to everyone, our school principals, Mr. Frank Ladoc, who's not here today, and his, and Renee McMillan for spearheading the work. A special recognition will be given at this year's New Jersey School Boards Conference in Atlantic City next month. Let's continue to strive for even greater success, or let's try to reach goal. This summer, three of our P-Tech students interned with our industry partner CGI and performed so well, they were offered full-time employment with benefits upon graduation. This offer includes tuition reimbursement if they choose to pursue a bachelor's degree while working. This success exemplifies the core mission of our P-Tech program, which includes, which allows students to earn both a high school diploma and a social degree in middle sex at no cost in a STEM field. Students gain valuable workplace experience such as mentorship, worksite visits, internships, and upon graduation, they're actually first in line for a job interview. We are grateful for our partner, CGI. I am thankful to the administrators and the staff at P-Tech, Mrs. Mika Sadomas and her staff for providing these experiences for our students, and we are looking for more students to earn internships as well as possible job placements upon completion. So, thank you so much. This is really, really, you know, when we decided to start the P-Tech program years ago just to see that it's actually evolved in what we envisioned says a lot, and I attribute to the hard work of our district and our staff. And lastly, this September and October, we celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month. From September fifteenth to October fifteenth, reaffirming our commitment to diversity, inclusivity, and equity. We encourage everyone to engage in honoring Hispanic culture by supporting Hispanic-owned businesses, enjoying Latin American music, and exploring the vibrant art and history found in museums. That concludes my remark.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Moving to item number five, the Student Representative Report.
We need a motion to approve the Superintendent's Report.
Second.
Ms. Caldwell.
Yes.
Mr. Ortiz.
Yes.
Mrs. Seawood.
Yes.
Mrs. Solis.
Yes.
Mr. Spencer.
Yes.
Ms. Varela.
Yes.
Mr. Adorno.
Yes.
Ms. Sevilla.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Sorry, we're so eager to do item number five, but we'll be introducing our student representative, who is Ms. Emily Cruz Mameje. She is a member of the Class of two thousand and twenty-five and an active leader in our school community. She currently serves as the captain of the girls' junior varsity soccer team and communications director for the New Brunswick High School Student Council, and she also serves as a mentor for the Peer Leadership Program. So, welcome, Ms. Emily.
Good evening. My name is Emily Cruz. I will be presenting the Student Representative Report. The two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five school year started off with a warm welcome from the Mayor's Office, School Board, and community dignitaries last week. Everyone was excited to be welcomed back to the New Brunswick High School on the first Friday of the year. All fall sports are up and running at the high school. In the middle school, we have football, boys' and girls' soccer, girls' tennis, girls' volleyball, cross-country, and cheerleading. Clubs are starting to have meetings such as class and student council, marching band, color guard, and et cetera. All classes met with their vice principals, counselors, support staff, and the principal. Expectations were reviewed as well as upcoming events during the school year. Back to School Night is scheduled for Thursday, September nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, from six to eight P. M. Parents and guardians are encouraged to come to the high school to meet their students' teachers. Girls' soccer is off to a great start with a record of four-one-one, posting three shutout wins early into the season. Girls' volleyball also won both their last two matches over Highland Park and Warlow Hartridge. Esports is opening their season today versus Beside County Tech and Rocket League. This concludes the Student Representative Report. Thank you.
Welcome again, Ms. Emily. And we shared before, you are the most important person on this table, so thank you for joining us. Item number seven, the Athletic Committee Report. I'm sorry. Item number six, the Facilities Committee Report by Mrs. DeSena Medina. She's not here today, and so we will be skipping today's report. We'll have no reports today.
Facility Committee Men, September eleventh. The district-wide LED signage project is underway. Currently, half of the signs are in the process of being installed, including electrical power and the balance of the signs are being scheduled for installation. At completion of this project, we will have LED marquees at all our district school locations. The security upgrade project, camera installation at the high school, middle school, and Lower Sterling is nearing completion. At completion, we will have a total of three hundred and thirty-three cameras at those schools. The HVAC upgrade project at McKinley Community School, replacement of twelve unit ventilators at the second-floor classroom, and at McKinley Kindergarten, replacement of HVAC equipment serving the gym and the kitchen was completed over this summer. The high school Lord of Territory and Project Upgrade of the house lighting was completed over this past summer. That concludes my report, Madam President.
Thank you so much, Mr. Spencer. Moving to item number seven, the Athletic Committee Report. Mr. Vinny Ortiz, Chairperson.
Thank you, Madam President. I'll give you the fall sports update. Football, we are oh and three. This is a tough year for the football program. We are, we had a lot of kids come out, but as the practices got on, a lot of kids dropped out. It's obvious that the most popular sport now in here is soccer. So, we're trying to rebuild, so we're in a rebuilding year for football. Our boys' soccer is our zero, one, and three, which sounds bad, but it's not. Pretty good. Girls' soccer is four, one, and one. Girls' tennis is one and three. Girls' volleyball is two and two. And esports, we won our first game today, so we're one and out. Just so you know, that our middle school has the same sports that we have in our high school. We have over one hundred student athletes registered and cleared to play starting games this week at the high school. There are over two hundred and sixty-five athletes with a combined two thousand and twenty-four, twenty, twenty-three, twenty-four GPA of three point oh five in all of the sports combined, which are both an increase from last year. The new auxiliary gym at the high school was now open and already being put to good use. The district has created a new fitness class as an elective for students to take during the school day. Fall sports are also utilizing the new space in conjunction with the current existing weight room. Thank you again to all of the board members and cabinet members who made this possible for all of our students at the New Brunswick School. Play Smart is working with students on a regular basis to have all athletes eligible to play, sports graduate, graduate, graduation, and college ready. Play Smart also has been getting on our students, athletes, involved completing community service opportunities around the city. Fifteen teachers have signed up to tutor after-school at the high school as well as seven at the middle school. Tutoring began at the middle school on September ninth and at the high school September sixteenth. Winter sports registration will begin early October for basketball, wrestling, indoor track, bowling, and esports. That's all I have to report, except I'd like to have a vote on the August two thousand and twenty-four Athletic Report.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Caldwell.
Yes.
Mr. Ortiz.
Yes.
Mrs. Seawood.
Yes.
Mrs. Solis.
Yeah.
Mr. Spencer.
Yes.
Ms. Varela.
Yes.
Mr. Adorno.
Yes.
Ms. Sevilla.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Moving to item number eight, the Curriculum and Policy Committee Report by Mrs. Diana Solis, Chairperson.
Thank you, Madam President. The Curriculum and Policy Committee met last week on September tenth. We had a presentation by Mrs. Virginia Lagos Hill. Ms. Hill presented on the grading for equity, what it is, why it matters, and how it can transform schools and classrooms, a presentation she facilitated to all building and district administrators as long, as well as the new teachers in our district. In New Brunswick Public Schools, we believe in the following three pillars of equitable grading: it's accurate, bias-resistant, and motivational. So, grades are to be mathematically accurate, validly reflecting a student's academic performance. Our grading must be using calculations that are mathematically sound, easy to understand, and correctly describe a student's level of academic performance. Grades are to be bias-resistant, preventing biased subjectivity from infecting our grades. Our grading should be based on valid evidence of students' content knowledge and not based on evidence that is likely to be corrupted by a teacher's implicit bias or reflect a student's environment. Grades are to motivate students to strive for academic success, persevere, accept struggles and setbacks, and to gain critical lifelong skills. The way we ship grade is to be transparent and understandable so that every student can know his or her grade at any time and know how to get the grade he or she wants or they want. We also discussed multi-tiered system of support. Ms. Hill presented the multiple measures of data that is being used to provide a multi-tiered system of support in ELA and mathematics as well as enrichment to our students. District's win period, cycle one, a tier-three level of intervention is set to begin on Monday, September twenty-third. All the administrators here, you know all, all about it, and so the district and the board were very, very happy to see these things in motion to really empower our students and to bring our mission forward because it's something that I think truly will bring our district's mission, mission into fruition. We discussed resolutions, and all the resolutions were reviewed and recommended for approval. They're in the consent agenda. There were no policies and no regulations that we discussed. That concludes my report, Madam President.
Thank you so much. Moving to item number nine, the Student Support Services Committee Report. Mr. Ivan Adorno, Chairperson.
Thank you, Madam President. We are excited to announce that our September my full-minute mental health newsletter was released to our school community and is now available on our district website under the Student Support Service Department tab under Suicide Prevention. This edition provides wealth, a wealth of mental health resources for our community and emphasizes the importance of coming together for suicide prevention a month. We are also thrilled to announce the launch of the Help Me app, a significant addition to the train to the trained mental health supports already available in our schools. This innovative app is more than just a tool. It's a comprehensive network designed to empower every member of our school community with twenty-four-seven, three-sixty-five access to support. Whether you're feeling overwhelmed or facing crisis, the Help Me app provides immediate connection to a, to trained counselors, two-way communication, and a dedicated help center that actively monitors and assists with emergencies. That concludes my report, Madam President.
Thank you so much, Mr. Adorno. Moving to item number ten, public comments. Do we have anyone?
Yes, Madam President. We have three individuals that have signed up to speak this evening, starting with Mr. Charlie Cradaville, who has signed up for the year.
Will you, please state your name and address?
Good evening, Charlie Cradaville, Woodbunstown Street here in New Brunswick. I'm editor of New Brunswick Today. I'll start by just saying best wishes to all the students and staff on the new school year. Congratulations to Ms. Caldwell, and best wishes to you. I know you did a great job as the student rep and wish you all the best out of your on the board as a voting member. I will say one thing you could do for the public to make these meetings better is to get rid of the advanced sign-up requirement. I know that, yeah, there's only a small group of people speaking tonight. Most meetings, it's only a small number of people, and, yeah, I think you would do better to get parents and students involved in speaking up here. One way to improve the turnout and the participation would be to remove obstacles, and unfortunately, that's an obstacle that does turn a lot of people off. We've seen parents and students come here and not be able to speak and have to either come back a month later or, you know, just a lot of times they end up not speaking at all. So, I hope that that's a change that you can get on the agenda for the next Board of Education meeting. And I do want to ask about the Educational Services Commission in New Jersey. I didn't see an update on the agenda for DSCNJ. Does anybody have a comment on the Comptroller's Report on the DSCNJ that, among other things, found they improperly awarded about fourteen million in contracts without competition?
We don't have a comment.
Okay. May I ask why it's not on the agenda? Isn't it supposed to be?
We have not officially met as a board this Friday, and then, so after that, I'll be presenting.
Okay. Great. I also see a resolution on here I wanted to ask about. AQ is for the McCoy Group. Is that the company affiliated with Marty McCoy, the former district official?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And can you tell me what, you know, led to, led to this resolution?
We're working with the McCoy Group to provide our first and second-year principals and vice principals some PD and effective observation feedback, working with them, giving them the ground and the basis how to provide feedback that's not bias-related, and also what to look for in observations that are meaningful and specific. So, she will be working with our first and second-year principals and vice principals.
Thank you. And, yeah, with the remaining time, I did want to ask if there's any update on a court matter. It's CR versus New Brunswick Board of Education. This is a matter involving David Holmes. Can maybe your attorney give us an update on that case and where it's at?
No, I haven't heard anything from the insurance company that's handling it for us. The issue is no update. If there, if there is, I will report it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Ms. Sevilla.
Yes, Madam President. Next, we have Ms. Lita Stork, who has also signed up for the year. Is Ms. Stork present this evening?
I don't see her.
Okay, she is not present this evening, so we'll move on to Dr. Dale Caldwell.
Good evening, board. I'm Caldwell at sixteen Gooddale Circle in New Brunswick. My last meeting, I was out of town, so I didn't get a chance to really just say thank you to all of you on the board. It, the twenty-six years that I spent on the board was really one of the, one of the most rewarding things that I've ever had in my life. Each and every one of you, and we could spend the three minutes just thinking each of you. So, I just want to publicly thank you, and I also want to thank you for voting for Ashley Caldwell to serve on this board. She loves New Brunswick. She loved being a student rep, and I think she'll bring a perspective that will add tremendous value. Also, I want to thank those of you who speak here, and it's, it's wonderful to have the faculty and the staff and just have really enjoyed this district. One of the things that I wanted to say, as many of you know, I've had a chance to consult to, I did a lot of superintendent searches across the country. I actually did school board training across the country, and I can say with great confidence that this is one of the best boards of education in the United States, that the collaboration and the focus of this board, the commitment to students, the commitment to doing the right thing. And the one thing that I'll say for, for, for those who are here who really don't understand what goes on with the Board of Education, when you are on the board, you have very difficult decisions to do what is best for the entire district, for all of the students. So, sometimes you'll hear us saying, why don't they do something for this school, and why don't they do something for that school? We have a limited number of resources, so it's critical for us to make the right decision so that this district can continue to serve the residents and students of New Brunswick in the best way possible. And finally, I have to say, it is very easy to sign up, twenty-four hours depends, and in three minutes, I can say everything I need to say. So, that policy is brilliant, and I'm so happy to be at. So, thank you all very much.
Thank you, Dr. Caldwell. Do we have anyone else?
No other public comments.
Thank you. Moving to item number eleven, the President's Report. I echo some of the methods that Dr. Caldwell was talking about in terms of what the board does behind or the background, right? That sometimes we are having to take or make decisions, making decisions that are focused with the best of our students. So, thank you for reminding us about that. I also want to bring, like, to have, this month is National Hispanic Heritage Month, really bringing awareness and giving the platform to the contributions of Latinos in this community, not only in New Brunswick, but also in the U.S., right? We have children that take an alliance to, to the flag of the United States and really do contributions, including one whom is actually one of our, he's a junior in the district. His name is Oscar Garcia. Maybe some of you guys already know him, and he was actually honored during the flag raising here at the county, at the, the county here at the Supreme Court, and also was also honored during the Mexican festival that took place on Sunday. So, he definitely represents how every day we can choose to wake up and challenge ourselves to be better. So, we congratulate Oscar, and we're really proud of him, so. Also adding to that, this month, it's the National Suicide Prevention Week, which really also brings the platform and awareness about suicide prevention, and talk about the warning signs of suicide. I think that in the last couple of months, we've been doing a lot of campaigns talking about mental health, but really talking about brain health, right? And one thing that I can say, that the most powerful tool that in any prevention case that we could do is really empower people, young people at that, to ask for help when they need to, right? That taking away the shame or taking away the quietness so that we can empower them, that just like any other aspect of your body, mental health and brain health is just as important. So, it's a lot of good work that we've also been doing at the district level, so. And that concludes my report, so. Moving to item number twelve, the Consent Agenda. Can I please have a motion for Resolutions A through AX?
Ms. Caldwell.
Yes.
Mr. Ortiz.
Yes.
Mrs. Seawood.
Yes.
Mrs. Solis.
Yes.
Mr. Spencer.
Yes, but I stand on A, C.
A, C noted. Ms. Varela.
Yes.
Mr. Adorno.
Yes.
Ms. Sevilla.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Moving to item number thirteen, the Finance Committee Report by Mrs. Patricia Varela, Chairperson.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome back. The Finance Committee met and reviewed the finance report. At this moment, can I please have a motion to accept September's finance report?
Second.
Ms. Caldwell.
Yes.
Mr. Ortiz.
Yes.
Mrs. Seawood.
Yes.
Mrs. Solis.
Yeah.
Mr. Spencer.
Yes.
Ms. Varela.
Yes.
Mr. Adorno.
Yes, I stayed on page seven.
Page seven noted. Ms. Sevilla.
Yes, I've stayed on page thirty-one, please.
Page thirty-one noted. Motion approved.
Item number fourteen, resolution for a closed session, whereas the open meeting Whereas the open meeting, Public Meeting Act, New Jersey NJSA ten four dash six, provides a certain matters of a public body may be discussing closed session, and whereas, the Board of Education intends to discuss matters as follows: one, personal matters, or two, matters of attorney-client privilege. Now therefore be resolved that the opposite subjects shall be discussing closed session by this Board of Education and administrative staff, and the minutes of said closed session discussion will be made available to the public when the reasons for the non-disclosure in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act no longer exist. Can I please have a motion for a closed session?
Second? Ms. Caldwell?
Yes.
Mr. Ortiz?
Yes.
Mrs. Seewood?
Yes.
Mrs. Solis?
Yes.
Mr. Spencer?
Yes.
Ms. Varela?
Yes.
Mr. Adorno?
Yes.
Ms. Sevilla?
Yes.
We are in closed session.
Thank you.